So, good evening to everyone. Guys, we are not at a funeral. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, thank you so much. Look, I know that our preference would be to be joining collectively under different circumstances. And I just want to start out by saying that we're truly fortunate. And it's it's the harsh reality that we're now at a tipping point. And we had a situation where lives were impacted from the standpoint of the individual that made that poor choice. But everyone was able to go home safely. And I want to commend our safety officers, our coordinator, Abboten Police Department who was present, that everything that should have happened under those conditions did happen. Which is why we're here now trying to be proactive to a situation that could have been much worse. For for those of you who do not know, because I never want to take anything for granted. My name is Brian Scriven. I am the proud superintendent here for Sheltonham School District, entering in my third year as leader at the helm. I want to frame the meeting, but prior to doing that, I do want to make some introductions of some of the individuals that are here with us this evening. I do have some representation from our board of directors. We have Mr. Fishbine here. We have Mrs. Haywood. We have Ms. Loman. We have Ms. Mahern. We may have others that join, and I will introduce them when they come in. Chief Slaven is here representing Sheltonham PD. We have Lieutenant Snyder, who is here as well. And my last officer. What's the title? Sergeant Jeff Murphy. It's important. Names are important. They had a long day because all three of them were also at our clap, clap it up at EP this morning. So really trying to strengthen that partnership. Additionally, I do have my solicitor here, Mr. D'Azio. We have our AD, Mr. Patrick Flurry. We have our whole administrative team for Sheltonham. Dr. Hammond, Mr. Zubayru, Mr. Brent Ryan, Lori Felgoys, Principal DeAndrea. We have elementary principals here, Mr. Teller, principal at Wincook. We have Dr. Robinson in the back, who's the principal at Glennside. We have Irv Brockington here, who's one of our commissioners. We have alumni. I have Dr. Smith here, who's my assistant superintendent. I have Mr. Metcalf, principal at Cedar Brook with his wife. And then we have all of you, family, guardians. Do we have teachers? Any teachers here? We have some teachers in the back, Ms. Chafron. I have Andy and others. Ms. Rodwell Green, UPG, is in the audience. Do I have members from CEAC here? I have my CEAC representation, Lisa and others. Thank you. Ms. Horsey, mother and daughter are here who are still active in the community. So I have my football parents who have a voice. I have my whole security team. I have Mr. Joe Myatt here from IT, Mr. Kevin Coffin, Communications Director. I'm just pointing it out because there's a lot of individuals that care and want to get this right. I'm a straight shooter. I hope that I was very clear, concise, and explicit in terms of giving you updates over the weekend. I was not trying to leave anything to your own imagination or having you be placed in a position where you were creating a narrative, where we were in a situation where we were able to provide the narrative. So we're going to go ahead through. I've done introductions. Our purpose, our purpose. The coaching, coaching staff. Do we have coaches here in the back? My football coaches? Okay, alright, alright. High school PTO. We was gonna do shout outs. It was high school PTO. Okay. Look, I don't mind. C AAA in the house. Thank you. And we just talked. Napoleon Nelson and wife, AP at EP. Do we have anyone from Senator Haywood's office? Any representatives? Okay, I just speak to him over. Well, we have his man. He's in Scranton. I know where he is. I knew I wouldn't get far with that. But look, so our purpose this evening is really, we have some decisions that we have to make. I want to be very, very clear, and I have to be. We are not going to walk away this evening with resolution to everything which may be on your mind. I've gotta be very transparent. I know there's going to be questions, and I tried to respond to every email which I received over the weekend. A lot of those were around metal detectors. I'm not going to stand here before you and tell you we're going right to metal detectors anywhere in the district. But I'm not telling you that I'm completely closed to that being an option. It's collectively, as we move forward, we're going to do what's in the best interest for our system. I can share that we have another big game Thursday against Chester, and they're coming here. We had to keep it at a seven o'clock game. I was looking at trying to move it up. I will be doing screening at that game. I will be checking bags. There's going to be very explicit directions. We will be using the wand on everybody coming in the game. Because I feel that that is a measure that needs to be taken. So get here early and be patient. But that is our current reality, as I see it as superintendent. So you are going to have an opportunity. Very last thing you see is Q and A. But that elephant in the room around metal, I just wanted to put that out there in advance. You're here because I value the voice. I value collaboration. I value teamwork. I know I am one, and one cannot get the job done. I want to share this with you, my perspective. What we are dealing with is national, societal, and it's not a school issue or a community issue. It's our issue collectively and how we decide to go about addressing it. I hope that I have demonstrated sound leadership over my first two years. Because right now, relational trust and the trust that you have in me as leader is paramount. I don't know if any of you applied for this job when it opened, but you need to let me do the job. But that does not mean you don't have a voice in the decision-making process. So I'm just trying to kind of set the tone, because y'all have a different superintendent. I'm steady, consistent, and fair. But there's a lot of agendas. But there's only one agenda tonight. It's that agenda that was up there first thing. Don't try to hijack the agenda. Okay? So at this time, let me turn the mic over to Principal DeAndrea. I was there until halftime. I saw when one of our safety officers came over to Mr. White, who's our coordinator for safety here in the district, and whispered something in his ear. From there, I saw Mr. White go to one of the Abboten police officers who were stationed on our side of the field. That was with a little under two minutes left in the second quarter. I then exited the stadium because everything was going great, and I had no idea what the whisper was about. No more than three minutes in the car, I get the phone call. First person I called was the superintendent of Abboten. Because I felt that I needed to be the one to reach out to him immediately because at that time I knew that it was one of our students that made a poor choice. He was currently huddling with his team, getting an update on the situation. I acknowledge the fact that they were the ones that had to make the call, whatever that would be, because the event was housed at their school. So I respectfully hung up and asked him to circle back when he had an opportunity. And from there, that's all I can tell you in terms of firsthand. I believe in firsthand.
Thank you very much, Dr. Scriven. And again, my name is Jimmy DeAndrea. I have the honor of being in my second year serving as principal here, but this is my 11th year as a principal overall. And so to continue the story where Dr. Scriven left off, the Abboten police officers that were there, some who are school police and some from the Abboten Police Department, then came into the area where everyone, I think, now knows there was a student that when Dr. Scriven shared that he saw people whispering, there had been someone that was on our side, one of our spectators that had shared with one of our safety team members that we had brought to the event, that they had seen an individual who had a gun on them. And it's really important, and we emphasize this to students today, how critical it is that when we think about our processes, we are always emphasizing to students and staff and community members, the importance of if you see or hear something of concern, to immediately share that information. And I know we'll be talking about that later in terms of anonymous ways to do that as well. So that information was shared with a safety team member who reported it to the head of safety for our school district, Mr. John White, who then informed Abboten Police. So then they moved over into the area. The individual of concern was not standing directly in front of the bleachers on the visitor's side, but along the fence line between the bleachers and where the scoreboard was located. They were, several police officers, just kind of monitoring the situation, and then made the decision, right as second quarter was coming to a close, going into halftime, to go over to that individual who was standing with two other individuals, one a male individual, one a female individual. That very quickly after they got over there turned into those two individuals, the two male individuals being placed on the ground and placed in handcuffs. And the one who was later identified as one of our students was in possession of a handgun, as well as two extended magazines, which eventually, again, that information came out later. The female student, the female individual who was there, was not placed in handcuffs. The other individual who was there was not a student of Sheltonham High School or Abboten High School. So at this point, the police officers from Abboten Police Department took the, both individuals at the time, to the, one of the cars that was waiting on the hill overlooking the scoreboard. And then our staff who were there on site were debriefing about what had occurred and obviously coordinating very closely with Dr. Scriven, and I was in touch with the principal of Abboten High School to talk about what was occurring and next steps. After that, halftime performances were wrapping up. The football teams came back on the field for the third quarter, and then there were several Sheltonham staff members who happened to be standing down in the end zone closest to the locker rooms and the entrance. And with one minute and 49 seconds left in the third quarter, we noticed that all of the players were running off the field from both teams. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So I do want to fill this in because I spoke directly to the superintendent of Abboten about this. There were some of the questions that were coming out in some of my, in some of the emails that were sent to me. Why the delay? If this happened at halftime, why was there a delay? Why did we go all the way with a minute and some seconds left in the third quarter? Why was there not a PA, some type of PA announcement that happened immediately? This is all I can say. Is that the superintendent, after the huddle, did immediately make the judgment call to end the game right then and there. If you have one gun, there's always a potential that there's more. And under an abundance of caution, he made the right call. That was a call that needed to be made. I can't speak to where the disconnect came in. I just met 4:30 with Principal DeAndrea, Dr. Smith, Mr. Flurry, Mr. White, around our protocols with regard to Thursday's game and any game, whether it be active shooter, whether it be shelter in place. We're going to now have walkie-talkies on the field because a question came up. How do individuals communicate? Cell phones aren't enough, so we need walkies. So we have a direct line of communication. There is a lot of measures that we put in place after our opening game against Abboten last year that we will be following again this year. So I'm never going to put a principal in a compromising situation in terms of trying to answer something that he may or may not know firsthand. I knew that firsthand. That's why I took the mic to share it with you in terms of the gap, which we can't really explain, but we are prepared for if we have an emergency situation, there are written protocols that we will be following, that will be clearly communicated to all of our staff on hand. Let me pause there. Are there any questions specifically around Friday before we move on? Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you. So my only first clarifying question. It sounds like based on what you explained, that the decision to call the game rest with the superintendent of the homeschool. Okay, do we have? I don't know if we're ready for other questions. Okay, do we have protocols in place that allow us to have any say about what happens at an away game? And then I think if you could also lay out what our current policies are around safety.
Okay, so we do not have say around away games. I'm just going to be honest. In Montgomery County, every district has policies and procedures that are specific to the communities that they serve. In terms of our policies around our games, I'll ask Mr. White to come up a little later, and he will spell that all out for what that would look like here. If there's questions specifically around Friday and what happened, that's what I'm interested in. You can go here. You can go here. And then we'll go here, and then we'll go here.
I just wanted to ask, so when a school official contacts the police and the police are on scene, does what the decision's about happens, is it up to the police? Is that how it works? Is that what happened Friday? Like, so instead of it being about what the superintendent said, did it?
So, so the question is two different situations. You have one situation when involving the superintendent. Do we continue with the game or do we end the game, right? No, that decision is a superintendent's decision. The role of our police officers, and I'm glad we have some here this evening, once we turn over to them that there's an issue involving a safety or whatever the case may be, we then yield our authority to them to do what they need to do pertaining to that specific situation. So there's two parallel tracks that are running at the same time. One school-related and then one police enforcement-related. Okay? There was an individual all the way in the back, and then I think, were you next, sir? Okay, let me, let me go here first, and then we'll come right to you.
Hi, I was there on Friday night, and I am curious, you touched on it, but I'm curious how both football teams knew to get off the field when they did, when the rest of us were just watching them realizing that something was happening and we were reacting to the football teams. How did the football teams both simultaneously get that information when nobody else had it?
So, so the Abboten AD and assistant principal relayed a message to the officials, and the officials relayed something to the team and coaches. Yes, sir?
I wanted to follow up on that same question because I, while I understand that that information came from the AD and it went to the football teams, my concern is not just the people in the stands, but there were other students on the field too. Students who were part of the band, part of other proceedings taking place. And for whoever made the decision to prioritize the football team and have them go to a place of safety and leave all the students without any direction or recourse as to what to do without supervision, that is problematic because now these kids have to decide for themselves based on something unknown is going on here, and they're in a reactionary panic mode as opposed to being in a supervised removal from the field.
Understood. So this is the only way that I can answer that question. I know that moving forward as superintendents, and we have a cohort in Montgomery County, he's next right here with the white hat. We will be meeting to make sure that we are on one accord with respect to our protocols. There's a lot of learning that came out of Friday's game. We're not there yet. It brought to attention that there are some gaps, and that's going to be an agenda item at our next meeting. So we can have follow-up dialogue, but right now I can't give answers specifically. Yes, yes. Yes, sir.
Well, that was my question as well in regards to communication. I know it's it's a delicate situation. Like, how are you going to communicate that to thousands of people that, you know, there's someone in the stands that either has a gun or had a gun?
Right.
How do you, how do you direct that particular communication to thousands of people without people panicking?
Right.
So I'm just, you know, stating that as well because I was at the game and I didn't know what was going on as well.
Right.
So, but, but the other point is, and I guess you can address this at the, towards the end of the meeting when you're talking about specifically Sheltonham's
Yes, sir.
football games. It seems to me, in my opinion, and I've been to a number of games, that there doesn't seem to be enough presence, security presence, where the kids are.
Right.
All right, and I'm talking about just not only in the stands, but in the walkway as well. Because I saw that at Abboten's game as well, that there just wasn't enough presence. So and I know you can't have, you know, somebody there, you know, like every five feet. I understand that. But it just seems like there was too much going on, a number of different scuffles going on, and there was no one there to stop.
Right. So So one of our protocols, and I
And that's, and that's all I had to say.
Yeah, I will speak to Sheltonham from that standpoint. That's why you're required to have an ID. And if you don't have an ID, you have to be with somebody over 21 years old. And that's something that we implemented after our first game last year. We did that for the remainder of the season. We often also barricaded some of those open spaces on our side of the field where there was no access for anyone to stand. So we have charts, or I should say aerial of our field, our exits, all of that, where individuals are going to be posted. We're being very strategic with how we're going to approach it. Our protocol, if we had a situation, something's going right up to the announcer, a communication from myself through the principal that's going to go over to PA to the entire facility. That's our protocol. I'm not, and all due respect, I don't want to get caught up in what did or didn't happen at Abboten, which I have no authority over. I'm trying to be respectful to answer as much as I can, but that's a fine line for me. Okay? Yes.
Good evening. Just, I don't want to thank you all for holding this and giving a stop to me to speak. Just to piggyback off of what was said about no announcement being made. I was at the top of the stands, so I was able to witness the band students, the cheerleaders, the color guard, as well as all of the parents, and we were just sitting there confused on what was going on.
Right.
I had to make a phone call to someone that I knew was on the field to say, what is going on?
Right.
Because once some of our students and band members started to see the team run off, they started running, and it almost caused a panic.
Right.
And we were trying to tell them to please not run, to calm down. But in that situation, if they see someone running, they're going to want to start running. You had kids running behind the bleachers. Kids ducking under the bleachers was about to cause a whole nother safety issue and a concern. I was there with my elderly parents who were from out of town. My dad has a heart condition, and I was concerned about him getting trampled by these kids running because he was standing at the bottom of the bleachers. So I understand you just addressed that our protocol is to make an announcement to the entire stadium, but that was just my biggest, my biggest safety concern was the fact that once they saw that team running off the field, the first instinct for other children was to run because they did not know what was going on. And even for the parents that were there, we did not know what was going on until we had to get down to the field, keep asking questions to different people to get an answer of what is going on with our kids? Why are they in this locker room? How long are you going to be there? What is the process? What are we going to do from this point on?
Right.
That took about 30 minutes to get a concrete answer for. I'm not blaming anyone. It happened. I understand that. My concern is just how was, how are we going to correct this going forward? And that's just to piggyback off of what was just said.
So, so for us, it's just making sure that all those constituencies that you mentioned have a, know what our protocol is, and that's something that we will be making sure it's in the hand of every sponsor prior to Thursday's game. You had, you had two or three.
Okay, so I'm going to just stand. My name is Lakeisha Rodwell Green. I'm the current president of the United Parents Group, as well as the co-president of the Sheltonham High Band Parents Association. So I was there in the stands on Friday. It was very scary. I think we have plenty of other people from the band, color guard, et cetera. But a group of us parents, parent orgs met yesterday along with CEAC, C AAA, UPG, BPA, football parents, cheer parents, and Alumni Association representatives, and we put together a list of what we would like to ask of the district and Dr. Scriven. I know we shared that list with you. I also spoke with you, and you were gracious enough to speak with me over the weekend. I want to just piggyback before I read the list of what we're asking for this.
So let me ask this. I have no problem with you reading the list. I've read the list. I'm in agreement. The one thing that I have said, we're not going to solve this tonight.
Correct.
I would like to table that till the end because that's very extensive. Just hold tight. Because we have a lot of questions. Let me get through the questions.
Okay.
And then I'll let you read what you guys came up with that I think is good.
Okay, so can we compromise? And I read just what we're asking for Thursday. It's for
You will have the opportunity. Please, I was very clear. You will have the opportunity.
Okay.
Okay? I just want to be respectful of the other individuals.
So, and I want to thank you again for your honesty in your email.
Yeah.
But one of the things that we are asking for is the walkies and then the security measures that were put in place by Ms. DeAndrea during the last
It's all there.
And a few other things. So I will just ask, if anyone would like to see the full list,
Go ahead.
Please go to sheltonham.org backslash UPG and register for our list serve, and we will share it with you. Please go to Sheltonham.org backslash U P G and register for our list serve and we will share it with you, the complete list. And
I'm, I'm going to give you the mic. Don't worry. It's going to happen. Mr. Maya, is there any way of turning the microphone up?
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. I'm following a little bit of what Lakeisha is saying and the problem Friday night was my granddaughter's in the band. And they didn't know what was going on. Nobody said anything to them. She was separated from the drum line. She didn't know where everybody was running to. She stayed with the color guard and went running with them. They were all in a panic. Nobody knew where to go or what to do. And we were getting the panicked phone calls and that is not a situation that I ever want to be in. She needs to know that she's safe and she's protected and the band members and the color guard and the cheerleaders are equally as important to the school as the football players.
I agree. There's, there's, please believe that we have two over here, sir, all the way over, go around. Uh, you will get no argument from me on that. That's why we're here. And a lot of those recommendations that U P G put together were holistic in terms of every organized group that functions at that activity or any activity. This is just not a football activity. Um, I framed this because it's something that happened Friday at, at the game. And I knew there would be other items that came up. You guys are bringing forth valid points. We have two in the back and then I'll come here.
Uh, hi, thank you. My name is Matt Cooper. I'm also with Keisha, the co-president of the Band Parents Association. Thank you for holding this. I, I, I want to just emphasize what Risa and some others have said. It's really important that part of these protocols that we're putting in place are to let the students know how to react and what they need to do. And, and one of the things that was most upsetting for me as a person who was there, and I think I speak for others, is that is exactly that is knowing that some point, something was going on, but having no idea what the right and safe thing to do was. Um, you know, I know as a program, we have talked with Mr. B about what the band students will do, but I want to emphasize that I believe that there needs to be a program in place that the entire assembly of those folks know what to do and can be instructed so that we don't have a panic. I appreciate your commitment to communication at our, at our events here. So I want to recognize that, but it's important that we do that in an environment that doesn't make it worse uh rather, but makes it better. So, thank you.
So elaborate on the last statement for me. An environment that doesn't make it worse, but makes it better.
You talked about making an announcement over the P A at, at a, at a game that something is happening. That announcement can go several different ways. One of the things that can do is set off people running. We, that's not what we want, right? We want to be able to have a plan in place of the people who are coming know that, look, if something like this happens, you're supposed to leave, you're supposed to rally up, you're supposed to meet with people in a certain place, you're supposed to do this, you're supposed to do that. So that there is a clear plan, an understanding of action that needs to go.
And that's why I asked the clarifying question because that is something that I also stated that everyone would be clear, no matter what organization that they're affiliated with, what the protocol would be prior to Thursday. So I'm glad I had that opportunity to reiterate that because that was missed, at least on one ear, on one accord. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just to piggyback, I'm also a band parent and um was there on Friday. Two questions. One, I would hope, I guess this is not a question. I would hope that part of what the plan is in going forward is the communication amongst the leadership that includes parent leaders of other groups getting on a different channel, for example, or huddling up together to let everyone know at the same time what's happening. Then giving some kind of indicator of this is when we are going to do the next thing. So, so to speak to the football team leaving, which triggered a whole bunch of chaos, right? Second, at what point does the danger become bigger than the superintendence determine? So at what point do the police say, uh-uh, you're not going to continue this game? Because for me, knowing now what was happening, that was a little too close for me. I'm just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. So to your one point around the huddle, we're going to have the walkie talkies. All leadership will have walkie talkies. In an emergency situation, you may not always have the opportunity to huddle because things happen like that. That's why we're having the walkie talkies as a safeguard where everyone will be on the same page. So I just wanted to elaborate. I love the huddle, but it doesn't work in all situations.
Good evening. My name is Michael Brooks. I am a parent of a football player and also my daughter was on the color guard. So I, there's some duality in that role. Um, I'm struggling personally with the fact that the incident occurred two minutes before halftime with the score fourteen, nothing before thirty nine second mark. In my own mind, I want to put some correlations together based on P I W rules. But in this particular situation, it was made, the decision was made before halftime to stop the game to go a whole quarter. I know I won't be able to get the answers, but as a superintendent for full transparency, as a courtesy, can you please reach out and understand and provide to us what the disconnect was? Because for me, the difference between a no contest and losing, I don't know that it, it, it was influenced by the, the threat of coming back and then stopping the game. But from a perception, that's a narrative that's out there that we would love an answer for.
So thi- this is all, this is all that I can, can say to that, which I said earlier. When the superintendent was made aware of the situation, he ordered the game to be stopped immediately. I don't know systemically what happened, which delayed that call. Um, and I'll, by all means, I'll try to get more information. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Dana Burnley and I'm a, I am a parent of one alumni and I'm a parent of a, a a football player, but I'm also a Shelton Ham resident. Um, my concern, and I know that you don't have control of that as superintendent, nor do the Shelton Ham Police Department. I noticed walking in. Now I have a big old bag right here, right? I consolidated what I had before I got there. And I used a little fanny pack, knowing that this is my perception that they would go through the bag. Knowing what happened last year, they would go through the bag. They go through my bag at games here.
Mm-hmm.
That did not happen. Um, they had the manpower. Again, I know you can't take care of that. I know you guys can't, can't take, can't take care of that. But is there, I guess this is a question for both of you, the police department and you. Are there any discussions collectively um with each police department and about like where the mark was missed? It was missed. Um, they had more than enough manpower. Um, and again, we saw, the visitor saw, sidesaw police activity from like the set, the beginning of second quarter all the way through. I'd assumed it was kids jumping the fence. I did. Until it continued on. Um, so again, I knew it happened around that time. It was way before, like Mike said. Where was the disconnect? We, we acted as parents of all the children and we tried to, tried as much to slow them down because they were getting phone calls and texts about what was going on. So I just, that, that's a question for both of you guys. Thank you. And thank you for being respectful.
Yes, ma'am. So again, just to reiterate, we will be having further conversations because that, that is a superintendent's call in terms of how each district handles entry to games. We, we decided as a district to take the protocols that, that you experience when you come to games as a result of a lived experience that we had. Um, so that dialogue will be ongoing amongst superintendents. I, I'm, I'm being as forthright as I can. Superintendents, there's certain governance that they have. When it becomes a safety issue, that's when it's bounce pass. And I'll, I'll let Chief Slaven or, or Lieutenant Snyder, because they're coming up next to talk about the data that relates to our district specifically. And then they can answer some of those protocol questions, but that's why we have a memorandum of understanding. There are clear um lines of responsibility in terms of what the district is responsible for and what the police department is responsible for. So I hope that helps. Yes.
Hi, Dr. Scriven. I had a, um, my name's Marlena Carr. I have um student on the, a son on the football team. And we had kind of a unique perspective because we got there late. We couldn't get there on time. So we came at halftime. And we were told that there, we had to go to the main entrance to get tickets. We weren't at the main entrance. They had to stop selling them at the one we went to. We went to the main entrance. They said they're not selling anymore because the game's too crowded. But at that point, I guess they knew there was something going on and they weren't letting anybody in. So we tried to watch the game from outside the fence over by the like large building and the stands like where Abington was. And then we thought, let's go over to Shelton Ham because that's our school. So we went like around the back of the fence and watched from outside the fence. But what we saw were Shelton Ham students like flipped a trash can that was full of water bottles and they were jumping the fence like crazy. There were, there was no police presence on that, on our side that I could see outside the stadium. Like Shelton Ham side, there was nobody, no police back there. So I don't think they knew that was happening. The other thing was I was a teacher at Abington years back, so I knew where the locker room was. So when the boys exited the field, I thought, I'm going to go over there and see if my son's okay. So I did. I went behind the track. I went over to the outside locker room door and I knocked on the door. And those boys had a boombox in the locker room and they were going wild in the locker room, blasting music. There were cheerleaders and football players in the same room and I honestly saw no coach in the room when they opened the door multiple times. The other thing I saw was that Shelton Ham players and Abington players started to come out the doors to get some fresh air. And they started talking to each other and at first it was peaceful, but then they got bored and one asked the other one if they wanted to fight. And I happened to be right there. And thankfully, I guess they thought I was like a chaperone or something because I was not going anywhere till I figured out what was going on with the game.
Right.
And I just said, guys, we're going to take, we're going to take it out on the field. Hopefully you guys can get back out and play, go back in your rooms. And they were very respectful.
Right.
And they went back, but they were bored, they were scared and they didn't know what was going on. So I just wanted to share that perspective and I did not see any police. I saw empty police cars, but there were no police outside the locker room doors and those doors were unlocked and the boys could come, just head out. They could have all left, but they didn't because they were waiting to see what the coach would say. So I just wanted to share that.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
No, and that's something that we will revisit because we will be debriefing after this meeting.
Okay.
Uh, uh, so this is what I want to do. I have two questions here. I want to end with these two for now. I'm, I'm not shutting it down. I want to end with these two questions here. I want to come back to Ms. uh Lakeisha Rodwell Green so she can read um the recommendations which they've made. And then I'm going to go to the police department. Is that okay? All right. Yes.
Um, I just wanted to ask a question and I'm not sure how much you can expand upon it. The individual who was a Shelton Ham student, there was a lot of ammunition. Was there any information, what like what came of it? Did we know anything about what the agenda was or any context that this was a troubled student? Any follow-up? Was there any mention of, you know, going around that he was intending to do something at this game? Um, and again, I know that I'm assuming he's a minor, so I don't know how much you can give, but I haven't heard anything about that.
And, and I don't have any of that individ- in- information. And there were no indicators leading up to that. There was no indicators, no social media. There was nothing that would alert us other than that parent in the moment that saw that that individual had a weapon. Sure.
They see, was there, they just saw it and one of them
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. It was right here.
To further that, were there just one person that was arrested? Because you mentioned earlier that there were three people together. So one person was detained or?
Mr. White, I believe there was two, correct? Two were detained. Uh, the one young man who had a weapon was kept. The other one was released when, sir? Released at night.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Scriven again. Um, so the first, and again, these are just the recommendations that we would ask to see implemented for this Thursday and all games moving forward. And you've mentioned some of them, so thank you. Um, first requiring scanning, the scanning wand or metal detectors at all games. Um, two for home and away games to permit only clear bags or no bags at all. For number two, either permit clear bags or no book bags at all. If possible, so I'll, let me just finish it. No book bag policy and also ask the away teams to do so as well. If, if we're at away games to, to see if we can ask them to implement similar measures.
Okay.
Um, to have students scan their I Ds, have added security both behind the stands and throughout the stadium, including police, added lighting throughout the stadium and the stands, blocking off the stands um and the perimeter around the stands. For, for those who attend the games regularly, students tend to go behind the stands, congregate, sometimes they're smoking or roughhousing, they're jumping the fence. And I know at one of the games that happened, I think after the last safety issue and that was much better. Um, number three, walkie talkies and, you know, walkie talkies would be the best, I think, but we also said any, another type of device to communicate walkies um and ensuring that Mr. B of the band, the cheer coach and any student, you know, leader has a walkie. And then number four, putting in place a clear safety plan for all games and events. Uh, sponsors should know what to do and that's to Matt's point. At any time something happens, whether it's sheltering in place or leaving the stadium. Um, we would like to see a buddy system implemented for students. The band kids are, you know, needing to move equipment or sometimes they wander, you know, a student might be separated. And so if they're having a buddy who they're accountable for, we think that would be helpful. And then um number five, finally, the parents, we're asking that we be more vigilant. Um, many of our parent groups, we have text groups or group me. So I think it's just important for us to show up, to know, for our kids to know we're there. And if we see something, say something, not just to the district, but also to each other. And if there, if it's possible to put a safety, like a messaging um system in place where you can report if you see something at a game.
Safe to say is what
Okay.
we'll give
Okay, and that's it for, for the, the game.
So we, we have everything that you recommended in place for Thursday, other than the buddy system and making sure that all sponsors are on the same page with protocol, but that will be in place prior to Thursday. We have extra lighting. Um, we have security that will be behind the bleacher. That specific area, we can't cut off in entirety. We've cut off the open areas that are on the side of the bleachers. But we will have a police officer on the back of our bleacher. Um, walkie talkies will be in place for all leaders uh on that evening. So almost everything we have checked but two.
Thank you. And is it possible to share the safe to say with all parents?
Yes.
Maybe as a piggyback to this.
Yeah, I'll do a follow-up communication where we have that information. Yes. I'm sorry.
But I, I just want to add to that.
Yes.
Uh, so when you have your plan in action, and I'm hoping that their plan of action is that you want to have a discussion with the entire school in regards to, um, thank you, a plan um in case something happens at a game. I know we're specifying the football game because this incident happened, but I also wanted this for every sport in this um school. Because it just, it's not always just going to happen at a football game. It can happen at a basketball game. It can happen at tennis. It can happen, you know, with any other sport. So I'm not saying that, I'm not saying everything that you have to put everything in place for that, but there needs to be a safety plan for all kids and all sports and activities in the school.
Received.
And if I can mention, Dr. Scriven, we have been reviewing the questions submitted on Zoom. I believe they've been answered as other questions have come up, with the exception of just to clarify, there were I believe they've been answered as other questions have come up with the exception of just to clarify, there were no other weapons that were found. That was one specific question. And Zoom that I don't think we directly stated. Correct. Yes. No, there were no other weapons that were found. And we will continue to monitor the Zoom questions for those of you that are in the Zoom room.
My name is Batter. Can you hear me now? Hi. So I'm Courtney Pender. I am the co-president of the PTO Group at Glenside Elementary, as well as I have a senior here. Um, my question or inquiry is what happens outside of the games when the students are leaving in the parking lot, when they're. On their way home and they're still congregating out in front of the school and things like that. Because yes, this incident happened on Friday. But at a previous game last year, my son walked off of the field and one of his friends, you know, was followed to Target by someone who claimed to have a weapon. So what is the protocol for outside of the game? Because yes, you can protect them inside of the game or try. You can try to rally everybody inside of the game, but what happens once they cross over that line? And go into that parking lot and start to exit and be on their way home because everybody doesn't have a parent that picks them up. Those kids congregate. They go over to Wawa, they walk over to Target, they do a whole bunch of stuff outside of the football field area.
So that's a great question. It's one that I can only answer in terms of what happens on school grounds. I know that we had an i- issue last year after the Abington game where we had a disturbance at the Wawa. And we work with management at Wawa. Um, to make sure that our presence is felt after games. We also have police presence there after games. Um, I'm, uh, transparency. Sometimes I hurt myself with transparency. Um. I said we weren't going to solve everything tonight. Some of this responsibility doesn't just fall on the school. So I'm, 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 I'm receiving everything. But this is a partnership. So some of those questions are, if there's not a parent to pick them up, then who's assigned to pick them up? And what is the accountability on the other end, not just our end? And I think that's things that we need to unpack that we're not going to solve tonight. My, my one gentleman in the back, I know he had a question. And then, sir, you're going to be the last one for right now. Um, I have to go to my police officer. Let's see, you walk right by him, right here. And if you need this mic. Here you go, sir.
I'll be quick and, and I think this dovetails well with what you just said. It is not just a Shelton Ham problem. It's a community problem. Frankly, it's an American problem. But one thing I would ask and suggest and add to that list. Is that when you come up with the plan, when you put these ideas into place and you have that meeting with the superintendents, that you share the ideas with them. Because it's one thing for us to come up with plans and things with Shelton Ham on campus, but this didn't happen on our campus, right?
Right.
So when you go to another school, the same way when a parent sends a child to somebody else's house and you speak with that other individual and say, how are you handling this situation? I think it's important for us to know how these other schools are going to handle these situations.
It's a great point. And, and I do want to acknowledge, you can give them love, that's fine. I, I do want to acknowledge that as a community. The stakeholder leadership within this room. Did not just come to me. Doctor Scriven, what are you going to do? What are you going to do? What are you going to do? They met extensively over the weekend. And that's why I wanted to acknowledge Ms. Rawell Green. And, and they have an extensive plan with recommendations and, and solutions for my consideration. And I, and I honor that. In everything we do, I expect to be the model. Look, I'm gonna be very honest. I don't know too many superintendents that's going to let media in a, a town hall meeting. I have nothing to hide. We have to address. The conditions of our community. And I'm committed to doing that. And I need all of you to assist. So look, Chief Slaven, come on, sir. Say, 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 throw me a lifeline. Lieutenant Snyder, I don't know in which order, uh, you guys want to go.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. Uh, this is the one great thing about our community. When we have something like this, we're all coming together to try to come with a resolution, right? So we can do better the next time, always do better the next time. Um, I just want you to know, I'm a partner with Dr. Scrivens, my department's a department, a partner with him as well, Public Safety. Um, I'm a firm believer in his, his plan for our district here, and I want to help him be successful. I'm a parent also. My son was at the game as well. Um, you know, my daughter was in the band last year during la- last year's game where we had. Not a, not a gun incident, but we had a little bit of a scurry incident which caused some panic. And one of the things you said really struck with me about the panic and the fear, right? So when you have an incident like that, you have to be very careful on how you respond to those incidents, right? We have a duty to get everybody out of there safely as well. You know, that'll all come out in the after action talks on what happened and why it happened. What was, what was the delay and all that stuff like that? Just know that, that. When we do have an incident like that, we're going to respond to the incident and then we're going to formulate a plan to get everyone out of there safely as possible. I want you to know also that communication didn't happen today. This isn't the first time I, I spoke to superintendent or, or the principal here. They're on my phone. They have my number. I have their number. Uh, we're in communication whenever there's an issue. Spoke to them on over the weekend. Um, that's how this works. It's a partnership, truly a partnership with this. So we're looking for ways to improve. What can we do better? How can we prevent an incident from happening here? Number one, obviously. Number two, what can we do better? How can we do that? Communication coming throughout everybody's comment here is communication. Let's communicate the plan. Let's communicate our action plan, what we're going to do with that as well. Um, in addition to our partnership, I'm counsel to him as well. When he's making decisions, here's what we have. That's the relationship we have. Um, a great deal of respect for the man, as I said, and, you know, I want to, I want him to do a good job and I want us to get everybody out of there safely as well. So I'm going to give my two cents as well. We're going to come up with workable plan. Like I said, it isn't our first conversation. We have multiple conversations throughout the school year, and I think that's beneficial. On building and trying to do a better job moving forward with this. Um, I look at this as, again, like I said, as a parent, as a parent, it hits me, you know, it hits me where I live really. Um, you know, I'm on the phone with my son, what's going on, you know, and he's giving me the updates on what's going on and I'm not there. I don't know what, what exactly is happening. I'm getting a little anxious as well, just like any other parent would be there. So, um, we're going to learn from this. We're going to do better on this. We're going to put place, uh, procedures. That includes this, this upcoming game. We're going to have additional personnel there, as Dr. said. Um, we've had conversations after last year's game, uh, where we, I thought we came up short, uh, at that first game last year. And we instituted, uh, to doctor's credit, he instituted a lot of these procedures that throughout the rest of that football year last year went very smoothly. Um, and that's what we're looking to do. So we, we identified an issue last year. We said, all right, look, we can't have this. We got to put these in place. That includes personnel, not only my personnel, but his personnel as well. Communicating back and forth, having radios, having communication with somebody, you know, that kind of thing. And that's what we've done. We've restricted areas off, you know. As, as y'all know, we've all been to the football games. Now everybody congregates there. We said, okay, look, it's not well lit here. We can't have that. We have to clear this area out so no one congregates. It's those type of things. Let's put lighting up here so we can increase lighting here as well. So. Um, there are the things we learned, right? So we said, okay, we can do better here. Let's do these, let's do better with that. Um, and that's where we're going to go with this as well. This is going to be ongoing conversations on how we can improve this and how we can en- ensure the safety of our students and our staff. Um, and that's, that's going to continue to happen. And, uh, you know, make my recommendations and work in partnership with Dr. Scriven on this. You know, this is, this is a national issue. Everybody keeps saying that it is. It's not just a Shelton Ham issue. It's not an Abington issue. It's a national issue. In our community and we all watch the news. We've all seen, you know, this can happen anywhere, these type of things. We hear it happened right next door to us, right? So with involving our kids. Which is very concerning to me. So how do we go about doing that? You know, how do we improve? How do we improve for the next time? And that's why we're here. That's why kudos to everyone for being here. You know, giving your input into this, helping Dr. Scriven and I make, make good decisions and ensure the safety of everyone moving forward here. Um, as far as the investigation goes, um, it is an ongoing investigation. The Abington Police, uh, it, it, the event happened in Abington. Obviously, the Abington Police are the lead investigation. Uh, agency, uh, for this incident. Um, I was in immediate contact with Chief Malloy as well. That communication not only instantaneously happens with me and Dr. Scriven or me and Jimmy, uh, DeAndre. It happens with me and the chief forever to say, um, you know, all the Montgomery County chiefs and I have all their phone numbers. They have mine as well when something unfolds. You know, we get, we get, you know, hit right away and say, oh, something's going on like that. So it's, the communication almost starts. Right out of the box, it starts. And then we can formulate a response to how we're going to respond safely and effectively to this, this type of incident. So. I just want everybody to know, um, that's why we're here tonight to show you that, you know, we are a partner here and we want to make this. You know, learn from our, our incident that just happened here so we can prevent it from happening here in Shelton Ham or limit the opportunities for these events to happen here in Shelton Ham. So. I, doctor, whatever we can do to work with that, I know we'll be on continuing conversations and developing protocols and procedures. Communication, I think, is key. You know, having key, key people in there, like parent volunteers, coaches. You know, relaying the plan to make sure everybody understands this is what happens when we have an incident, right? So. Um, we do it all the time. The aftermath of an instance, we always go back critique and learn, say, okay, how can we do better the next time? Part of it's, it's always communication. If anybody's ever been involved in this thing. You know, communication is always the number one thing that somebody brings up. Communication, yeah, very, very important. So I think that's an excellent starting point. Uh, getting the, when we do get the plan together, we do get a protocol and procedure in place that we get it out. To those parents, those teachers, those coaches that are there. And we get these plans in place so we can put kids, you know, where they are, get them out of danger, put them in a safe environment right now until we can handle what it's going on as well. So. These things are rapidly unfolding as well. I know minutes, it seems like, you know, like that when you're in the middle of something like that, to be honest with you. Um, I'm curious to see what happened as well when decisions were made, but I was notified right after halftime of this and that this is going to happen. We're going to do this. We're going to, you know, we're going to try to get the stadium cleared out. And they did without any other incident as well. Uh, as far as that goes, there was no other arrest made. There was no other guns found. There was nothing like that in addition to that. But. You know, the game means nothing really. I hate to say that. It's, it's not even a point really. The, the point is to get everyone out of there safely. And that's the priority. Not the, not the sporting event. It's the students and the faculty and the staff and the visitors are at this game and how we can keep them safe. So. Please know that, that that's the priority. You know, there's no, the football game, we can play the football game in a little time. That's not the priority. The priority is the staff and the people. That's, then that's what we're going to be concerned with moving forward. So, um. As far as our incidents go here, I mean, you know. It just makes you give you a introspective view. We look and see like, what do we have? You know, as far as what's going on in our community with weapons and youth, you know, and guns and that kind of stuff. You know, fortunately where we're at in, in doing a review, that was one of the things that, that, uh, came about as a result of this. Let's do an internal review. Where are we at with this? How many jobs do we have with this? How many involve juveniles? How many weapons have we, we've seen? What are we seeing? So we went back five years and looked at that information, you know, and I want everyone to know that, you know, it's not, it's not a figure that's up here in the sky. We do have incidents that come up, but they're relatively few. Um, is if you look at the grand scheme of things, we went back five years and a handful in, in this past year in 22. And then there was years during COVID years, we didn't get anything. So that numbers was a little bit skewed because of the, because of the timing on that. But. You know, this isn't a frequent, ongoing, everyday issue with us. Um, so, you know, rest assured like that, this is something that we're going to take very serious. There's efforts, uh, underway now. This is, there's multiple causes to this thing. And I'm very curious, as someone said over here, what's the cause? What was the thought process with this, right? As we all, that's the parent of me coming out and saying, what's, why did this happen? You know, what was, what was, what was a kid thinking? What was a young man thinking? That would, we want to do this to a high, bring this to a high school football game. Why? So as, as a parent, that's what I want to know. I want to know why, what happened, what, what, what brought you to this? So messaging, um, we have to do work on messaging, getting this word out to our youth here. Um, and that's going to be a thing we're going to work on together, trying to get the messaging out consequences. Let, let students know there are consequences for these type things. You know, and just have that dialogue with them, open dialogue with them about this. Now, now's the time to do that after this incident. So we don't see that again. So I think we, we take advantage of the opportunity to do better. And that's one, open that conversation up with our students. And doctor, I know that's one of the things in your, in your plan as well, to do that. And, uh, we'll partner again with you, whatever we can do to help get that message out to our students and staff.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I really appreciate that you said a child made a really bad choice because that's what we're all dealing with. And I also really appreciate how you're working together and that this meeting is sort of a postmortem. And you're telling us what's in place for Thursday. I didn't see your agenda, so I hope I'm not hijacking. But what I really want to understand is, is there now going to be a commitment to figuring out? What we do to take care of our students' mental health moving forward? Because we all know that's a crisis. And. I know you may not have seen my full letter. I sent you Dr. Scriven earlier last year after you've already, a bunch of us got together, especially Napoleon Nelson, a bunch of other stakeholders. To talk about what did we think the community needed to prevent that here? And it kept coming back to mental health, mental health. And one of the things that I heard about that I thought was really amazing was these groups of people from all different walks of life, counselors, teachers. Therapists, OTs, police officers, who are always keeping an eye for children who seem like they're at risk. And then they're going in and instead of just sending a message that there's a consequence, which I do think is important also. The message they're sending is they're going to that family then. And they're trying to get in there before anything happens. And they're trying to support the child and the family. So I guess that's what I came here, even though my kids have already graduated, really wanting to hear about prevention and how we can all support you moving forward.
So there, there's one gap, um, that I saw. When I came and I, I, I took my time to really learn culture and climate. MTS is just a multi-tier student support program that we've put in place. We also use Linkit as our data platform. We have what's called early warning indicators. There, there are multiple measures, attendance, grades, referrals, et cetera. It, we're, we're being a lot more strategic this year with making sure we're all on the same page. Uh, and we haven't said a lot about the student, but it, it does hurt my heart because that was a student. K through 12 in this district that came through Myers. So that wasn't a transplant. That was somebody that came through our district. That somehow we fell and I own that. And that's why programmatically, I'm looking at what can we do to have those safeguards in place? Where we're bringing teams together as we're identifying trends in behavior. That where someone's struggling. And providing those wraparound services. I, I, I was that student. I could have easily have been that young man Friday. Unfortunately, I was not. But having trusted adults, having someone that knows your story is so important. And that's the culture and the climate that I'm trying to develop here. In Shelton Ham School District. And, and it starts with me. I, I own my stuff also. So it's not just, I'm not here talking. You will see the action behind it. And I've been trying to demonstrate that. I see a hand. Yes.
Um, thank you. I just want to piggyback off of something with the police department along with this school. Um, when we talk about a community and I want to piggyback off of what you said about it being everyone, it's not just the school. It does have to be parents as well. But I also want to say that, um, not only do I have a child in the school, but I have been communicating with this school. For more than, I'm going to say, seven years in regards to my community because I live around the corner from this school. So once the child leaves the school and they come to my property, I'm reporting what I'm seeing to the school. I'm seeing children come in front of my house and smoking while other children on the block are young children catching the bus. I have reported that to the police department. I have reported that to the school. I have followed the kid. I have been leaked for work to come in to make sure that I point the kid out. So if we're going to do this as a community, I appreciate that, but we are going to have to have more conversation like this. Not just about the football game. I know this is about this today, but what we are going to do about this community because we live here.
Thank you. That, that weed, that vaping, that's the issue. You come to any game. Look, you can't even drive down the road without smelling marijuana. I, I don't care where you go. It's everywhere in the building, in the parking lot. I, 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 I acknowledge that. That's something that we will be tightening up. But then when we, when we do what we need to do. Y'all, y'all need to support it. But also. I mean, are we checking the rooms at home? Are we, so we need to, we, that's a whole nother piece. I receive what you said. You about to get me. Look, so I don't want to, I don't want to digress. We're, any more officer, one question here. I had a hand here and then we'll come back there.
So, so real quick, I know you said Abington had the lead on the investigation on this particular item. Given that this hit so close to home for everybody. Given that this hit so close to home for everybody, I think we'd all appreciate if we could get updates from the Abington PD as the result of this investigation. I know Dr. Scriven's going to give updates for school-related items. If Abington could relay the information to you, that you could relate it to Dr. Scriven, just bullet points, updates. I think there's a lot of concern about unknowns and the intent, given the quantity of the ammunition that was with the individual. So I think that's probably something that we'd like to see.
Yes. And, and Abington has been out with their press releases right off the bat. If you've seen their website as well, they've updated again today. They put out a second one today that this is a juvenile, which also has some protections that go with that as well. But they will share information that's pertinent to the community. And speaking with Pat Malloy, the chief there, you know, they will share that information. They want the community to know what's going on. So he will be updating that to the extent that we're dealing with a juvenile as well. So there are some limitations on that. So everybody knows that. You know, we want to protect a child as well at the same time, get the information out. So it's like a double edged sword with that really, to answer your question. But they are very good at getting their, their messaging out. You know, they put out a release again today. It's out there again today. If anybody goes onto their site, Abington Police or Facebook, it's on there as well. They do a very good job of getting that messaging out to the extent that they can share certain information. There are certain things we can't talk about tonight because they're still investigating that, like the gun. And that's everybody's thinking, where's that from? Who's that? What's that? All that's being investigated now. So, and I can't comment on that right now. That's ongoing. So everyone knows that. So, so I just answer your question. They're, they're very good on their messaging as well. And they will get that out, what they can get out and share. Yes.
So
Jumping out loud, I'm sorry. 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 Okay. Yes, sir.
I just want to follow up on the actual student, something that's been bothering me for the past almost 24 hours since I learned about the no contest call. As a parent, as a former teacher, and someone who has seen these horrific incidents play out, especially in Philly, I am a little freaked out that this child and anyone else they're associated with in terms of retribution, you know, we have, we have kids that are upset about what happened, rightly so. We have football players that are now affected greatly. And I, you know, and, and anyone else this child was associated with, I don't know all the details. I'm not a police officer. How are we protecting this child and anyone else from any sort of imminent future problems?
A lot of that has to be uncovered as yet, to be honest with you, through this investigation of what happened, who was going, was there an issue? And then, you know, once the, the students identified, everybody knows who he is, probably the students would all know. You know, what, what are we going to do to safeguard the student when he's, when he's, you know, dealing with this process to the, the district makes their decision what goes on? So that's a conversation we have as well, Dr. Scriven and I as well with that. But that, that'll be all part of the investigation will come out, causal effect. Was there, was there other issues like that? Is there any flaws? Is there a second shoe? Is there any of that stuff? That all comes out in the investigation. So we should hopefully develop that information. Pat will share that with me. I would share it with Dr. Scriven as well. You know, so he knows what's going on, what we're hearing there as well. So that part of that I will share and then we'll formulate a response to that.
Hi. So I just wanted to piggyback off of what she said in terms of mental health. So I guess my question is, is there any programs inside of Sheltonham? Like when the kids are at Elkins Park, they have the pride program, they have the leadership program. Why do those programs discontinue once kids get to the high school? Because those programs, whether it's a mentorship program that Sheltonham can partner with outside organization, these kids don't know conflict resolution. So they need to learn those things so that you can do whatever you need to do to protect the kids once they are here in the school. But as she said, once her child left the campus, these kids need to know how to, how to just not get into these conflict, not even think about carrying a gun. So they're so, so because of COVID, whatever the case may be, they don't even know how to solve problems. So they know in elementary school, the Winco way, they know all these things. But once they leave Cedar Brook, come over here to the high school, it just seems like mindfulness, all those programs doesn't exist. So what programs are here at the high school to help with those?
So before I pass it to Principal DeAndrea, I have a meeting with Judge Tolliver tomorrow and his group who initiated one of those programs. He had the CAN program that went way back at EP. Chris Pender, who's a former board member and others around mentoring here at the high school. I'm also in constant communication with Senator Haywood, Pastor Waller and Pastor Mitchell. Atif is right here. I'm gonna put him on the spot. Atif, come here one second. So. At, Atif is, is, is working with Abington right now unbeknownst. There, there's some things they're dealing with as well. And me and Atif have been talking for the last over a year now. There's a personal connection, but there's a professional connection. And I want him to speak to some of the work that they're doing at Abington that I want to try to duplicate here to answer your question.
Thank you, Dr. Scriven. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here. We're doing work with Abington again, just like Dr. Scriven talked about with Senator Haywood, with Pastor Mitchell and all of the judges. And what you talked about, and, and I think some of you saw some nods going back and forth here, was the mental health issues as one big part of that. And so underlying the work that we're doing in Abington that we look to bring here to Sheltonham as well. And, and I'll just underscore that as Senator Haywood's mission to make sure that it's here is providing mental health support in the schools to the students, but not only the students, also the parents at the same time. So not just one, but a multi, excuse me, a multi-generational strategy and approach. With that is going to be a mentorship program alongside that as well, coupled with a sports program as well. So take them outside of the activities they're doing, giving them mentors and also addressing the mental health issues as part of that. Sure. I'm sorry. My name is Atif Bostic. I lead an organization called Uplift Solutions and we do work in Philadelphia predominantly, not only, but predominantly with justice impacted individuals, excuse me, and at-risk youth. We have diversion programs with the district attorney's office. We have programs with the prison system in Philadelphia as well. Thank you.
And if I can also just chime in briefly on a couple of things. So that is definitely one of our top priorities is how we build more opportunities to promote positive mental health and wellness. And one of the groups that we have partnered with here at the school is the Sheltonham Communities That Care Organization. And so one of the things that they have done is, and they started this last year, they created a leadership team of students. It's open to any student who's interested. It really focuses on promoting positive decision-making, positive wellbeing for students and brings in other students to be able to develop ideas and ways to get the word out to students about this is a great opportunity for you and ways you can connect. They're also in the process of developing lessons that we will then be able to implement in all of our classes throughout the school. That will help provide opportunities for students to really think through all the things that we're saying here. Really everything that we do on a daily basis, and we talk about this with teachers regularly, is how do we support students for who they are? Because ultimately we've got to know our students, we've got to connect with our students before we're able to be able to help them to master whatever content that particular course is. So there's definitely a lot of things happening here that we are working to build on. And I definitely look forward to learning more about your organization.
Just real quick, I have to put you on the spot as well. But other than our eight counselors, we also have Lakeside. I know Ms. King's not here, but how many counselors does Lakeside also provide Sheltonham? And then we also have a soul. Can you just speak to other, some of the other resources we have here in, in the high school?
I know Dr. Horsey is present this evening and I will defer to her as our outgoing Director of Student Services to give the actual numbers on our counselors. But what I will tell you is we have traditional guidance counselors. We have mental health and wellness counselors at the high school in addition to the Lakeside counselors that Dr. Scriven referred to. Also, we do have mentoring programs currently at the high school that are targeted for our students who identify as female as well as students who identify as male. And we also have a mentoring program that is really directed through A.D. Flurry's office for those who are interested in sports, but may not necessarily be athletes who may want to go on and further athletics in college, but also still want to be very connected to the sports world. So we do have several programs running at the high school. Actually, myself and Dr. Horsey had a follow-up meeting today to talk about a new organization that we're also going to be partnering with. I do not want to make the announcement because I do want to make sure that our current Director of Student Services, Dr. Horsey and myself, we are all in alignment. And also I do not want to announce anything that has not been yet board approved. But it is in the works to bring more mentoring to the high school. And one of the things we continue to talk about is continuing, as this parent or community member mentioned, continuing to build upon what starts at Elkins Park moves to Cedar Brook and then the high school. Because in some regards, we want to make sure that our students already have skills, strategies and problem solving skills before they get to the high school level. And last but not least, we are going to work on this year importing a kind of train, the trainer model so that our upper students at the high school become peer mentors and they begin to also work with some of the, some of their peers who are coming to the lower grades from Cedar Brook to really make sure it's really a collaborative effort and making sure that, you know, we have students who are speaking the same language. Because some of us, I'll, I'll say myself, you know, we're, we're trying to keep up and, and they know where the interests are and also how to connect with one another.
We had a question upfront. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm a, I'm a parent. I had two children graduate the district. I have one in the high school now. And then I have two smaller ones that'll be going through the whole district. So I talked to my son today when he came home from school. He said that there was an announcement about the incident. And his impression was that it was isolated. But in reality, he's like, it's not isolated. Children bring guns to school. He mentioned, I don't want to say often, but they bring them to school and they're just trying to like show them off. So I don't know what you guys know about that or what you're doing about that. And then also you mentioned a lot of groups that are here, a lot of parent groups, police and a lot of leaders. But what I don't see is who's representing the students, where's their voice? And, you know, how are we talking with them to find out what, what they think and what they see as their reality versus our perception of their reality?
So the one thing that I will say, and I'm, I'm just going to speak to the latter part because I'm cognizant of time. Please, if you're a parent, there's going to be information coming out in the immediate future around the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council. That's going to be grade six through 12. That's going to be my opportunity to directly connect with student leadership. And I have not set a criteria. There's no grade criteria. I just want individuals that are interested in being leaders and having an impact in the community and their respective schools. So that's going to be one direct way that their voice is going to come directly to me. Hold on one second. Cause she's been very patient.
Hi, my name is Aziza. I am a parent here. I'm obviously because I'm here. But I'm touching on the mental health. Besides having counselors in the, the, the mentorship, are there any other alternative practices that you would consider giving the children or having the children take like? Now, this is what I like to do because I have a daughter that, that goes to Sheltonham and she has anxiety and she has depression, you know, and what has worked in our home is, is stuff like sound bath, sound baths, you know what I mean, to reduce stress and stuff like that. So have you considered alternative ways of dealing with mental, with children's mental health besides just them talking to a counselor or talking to a mentor?
Absolutely. And I'll just highlight a couple of them and anyone else can feel free to jump in. One of the things that we started doing last year that was very popular was regularly bringing in therapy dogs. Because that is something that, you know, whether a student, you know, is experiencing a really stressful time in that particular moment, or obviously with COVID and everything else is just a lot of built up trauma within them. The therapy dogs were a great, I will say, release in a lot of ways for students. And we're going to continue to do that this year. Another example of some of the smaller things that we do, and we're working to reestablish this this year. But last year, we had what we referred to as our calm room. And so there was a place that a teacher with, in collaboration with one of our student organizations, had developed a room where students could go to during the day. They could ask their teacher for a pass. It was just a place going there for 10 minutes. There were coloring books. There were other things just to help them decompress. And so the entry point, and there are a number of other things, I'll just highlight those in the interest of time. But the entry point is, you know, we want all of our students to feel comfortable going and talking to any of our 190 staff and saying, you know, I really am having a hard time today, or can I just have some time? And so our focus is on how we build those relationships so that students feel not only physically safe, as we're talking about here today primarily, but also psychologically safe and know that they have supports and resources in the building. And we emphasize that with staff for today in particular, you know, to think about how they modified what they did in the classrooms versus maybe what was originally planned for the first day, taking into account the trauma of, you know, what had occurred Friday night, whether somebody was there or somebody had heard about it. Obviously, it's an incredibly stressful situation and evokes a lot of emotions.
So I know we, we can keep going. Dr. Horsey in the back.
Good evening. Cheryl Horsey, the former Director of Student Services for this fine district. I want to thank Dr. Scriven, the board, Dr. Smith, the police for being here tonight. For those of you who know me, I have three children who graduated from this fine district. I currently have a grandson who's at Dr. Clark's school. As a resident, a resident for over 30 years. At the behest of my family, I retired in 2021. My daughter is here now as a social worker for the district, secondary, that is. I said to my family, I have to come back. I want to come back. And thankfully, Mr. DeAndrea, Dr. Smith, Dr. Scriven and the board allowed me to come back. And I want to tell you that I've developed some really good relationships with students in this school. They know me. They come and see me. I provide a safe space for them to talk, to listen to me when I put my mom hat on, or just to sit down and listen to music and just have a quiet space. So I want to thank Principal DeAndrea for allowing me to do that. And guess what? I'm back this year. Yay. When some of the students saw me today, they gave me the big hug and I'm like, I can't wait for us to get together and talk. But I also want to say, one of the most moving moments last school year was when we got the opportunity with Pat's office and my daughter's and Dr. Smith's approval and Jimmy's approval to host a focus group meeting with some students. It actually was with females. And we had a young lady who is an alum of the district, who has her own mentoring program called Make the Distinction. Ms. Alex Ingram graduated with my youngest daughter, class of '07. And we got together with the mental health counselor, Mr. S- Smitley Turan, my daughter and myself. We spent part of community lunch that day in May and we said, what can we do better? What supports do you need? What do you like about the school? What changes would you like to see? They were very open, very open, and they were very happy that we provided that forum. I'm thinking we will do that again. Because as what was mentioned there earlier, student voice is important. Those of you who know me know that I am a true student advocate. So I'm going to provide, as long as I can, the opportunity for them to share their voice. And thank you for allowing me to share my voice because it's paramount.
I'm gonna go here and then I want to hit policy real quick and we're going to bring closure.
Hi, my name is Swanita. I'm the treasurer of the BPA. So my daughter just started ninth grade, but she
Um, so my daughter just started ninth grade, but she's been color, doing color guard since seventh. I asked her the other day, well, Friday, how do you feel about the incident? And it touched my heart because my child said to me, this is the norm. It's normal. She shouldn't feel that this is normal coming into the high school. But unfortunately, she experienced this in seventh grade, eighth grade, being part of the color guard. So I'm going to piggyback off of her question. Can you share how often there are weapons, weapon scares in the, in a high school? And how often you guys have to go on lockdown and search book bags?
So can we quantify, Mr. White? Because I don't get a lot of reports of weapons. So you as parents probably have more information from your students than what I have as superintendent. Because if there were occurrences that came to my attention, there would be expulsions. And that's not the case. So can, is Mr. White still here?
What I would say is we regularly get reports often through Safe to Say about concerns and we will immediately follow up on those search students, whatever the situation may be, or have gotten things on social media. Um, but I would say that it's extremely rare that there is any sort of weapon that's identified, whether it's somebody who took a picture of themselves outside of school, um, and posted on social media with a weapon. Um, but I would say that's extremely rare. And I've worked in three different states and been principal at three different schools. And I would say that's something that here is very, very rare in the school environment.
Now, now let me answer. I'm just going to jump in because the, the time is late. I'm not going to say it's not happening. You did not hear me say that. You, you asked the question specifically of can we quantify? I am not able to quantify based on what has been reported, investigated, and subsequently what would have come to me. So I ju- I just want to be clear. Now, through Safe to Say, which does work, and we had the data to support. If there are indications where you're hearing communication from your children or whomever, then that needs to be reported so we can address it. The one thing I always say, I can't address anything that I don't know about. Um, so i- it's real important that we do that.
And if I could just chime in and add one more thing along those lines. I know some of you who were parents here last year, remember at the end of the year, there became a trend for a very short period of time where students thought it was acceptable to bring their water guns to school from home. Um, and I know that there were occasional calls on the radio and things about that that then resulted in students being concerned or scared because they were hearing part of the radio transmission. Obviously, we have emphasized to students that nothing that looks like a weapon is allowed on school grounds either. Oh, yes.
Uh, this was a question for, um, I guess Dr. Scriven and the police chief. Um, I have five kids who have gone, or are going or have, one has completed. And earlier, I guess the first three children going through Glen Side, there was a resource officer, Officer Jackie at Glen Side. By the time that my fourth, my fifth child went through, she was not there anymore. I believe because of budget cuts, I was told. Um, and I think that it's important for the little kids to get comfortable with the police. Um, she had relationships with the kids. She could talk to the kids. And you talked about messaging. If they don't have a relationship build up going through, you get to high school, they're not trying to hear anything you have to say, or do they trust you? Or do they want to be around you? Or they think that you're just there to do ill will to them? So I wanted to know how the police, since you're partnering, you said there's a partnership, how we can get that back so that we could have that relationship building, starting in the elementary schools and continue throughout the school system. And again, I'm saying relationship necessarily.
Actually, the unique thing is we've just had this conversation last week, um, you know, about the SRO. For a number of years, we had a school resource, two school resource officers here. One of them's in the room now, uh, former SRO here, uh, Dave Sprango. Um, and um, the benefit of having an SRO in a school is um, twofold. One on one, we have that presence. We can in, uh, build that rapport. And Jackie was unbelievable at it. I don't think I'm ever going to find anybody as dedicated as she was to this job. She was over and above. She was excellent. Um, but you know, that's what I would like to strive for, that type of relationship. So that's the one, number one benefit. Number two benefit is it kind of gives us an ear on the ground too as well, what's going on, right? So we've had information come to light about there might be an issue at a bus stop afterwards, that type of thing that's going around school. Someone feels comfortable with the school resource officer and says, hey, I'm hearing this. So we just had this conversation just a couple of days ago. Um, and that's something I, I see us, you know, building on. Um, you know, when she retired, we didn't fill the spots. There's several issues that go into that. Um, some of it is financial. Um, you know, we're not going to hide behind that. That's, that's true. That is, that was an issue as well. But I think part of this relationship and this partnership we're rebuilding involves that and involves conversations with that and getting there. You know, we have to get there again. So, um, he understands my position on it and clear on that. I, you know, let's get to that point. We have to walk before we can run, you know, certain times with this. But this is something that's proven itself to be of value. Um, it's proven to work. Um, and like I said, the benefits that we receive out of it as an A, as a police agency are phenomenal. I mean, it gets that rapport, puts us in touch with kids, and also it helps us when there is an issue with that. Yes. Exactly right. And that part, that's part of that. When I say, you know, you can't get a walk before your, that's exactly what that, how I meant. I should have clarified that. That's exactly what I'm talking about. Um, you said a little better than I did, but yeah, that's exactly right. We have to be able to get the messaging out, what we're trying to do, what are we doing here? Why are we doing this? So everybody knows. Um, one of the nice things is the transparency that we, we were talking about all the time. I mean, that's what that is. That's at in action. So, um, we're going to, we're going to get there. I have a feeling we'll get there, uh, you know, this, this is conversation level now, but I see that going to where, you know, we can get it. In the meantime, you know, we have officers, our officers stop by all the time, the schools. And I want them to have that familiarity with staff. I want the staff to know everybody's first name. If you're the sector officer that works Glen Side, I want you to know who that principal is. I want the principal to know who that officer that works there is. Um, you're better off dealing with, with someone one-on-one, someone you have rapport with when something's going on, like when the trouble hits, it's like, it's good to have that relationship beforehand, right? So that's, that's one of the other things we're working on. And we have some work to do on our end as well, getting out there, you know? I'm not just putting everything on him. This is my end as well, and I'm hoping to do a better job with that as well moving forward.
There's one initiative, Park and Walk, and we'll be going and meeting with Pr- Dr. Robinson, Mr. Teller. It's an initiative that the district asked the police force to do that we want to reset. Um, so we are having fluid partnership. Yes, sir.
Hi, um, just to go back to the specifics of this one, I'd just like to know who makes the decision and what the considerations are if this student will be back on campus and in the school.
Okay. Can you, can you say the last part, please?
And just who makes the decision and who makes the decision and who's involved? And what are the considerations if this student will be back in these four walls?
So I would make that decision in consultation with my solicitor and the board.
So what, what considerations? I know that the investigation has to be ended, but what are some of those things that you're looking for to consider? Whether it's an option they can come back?
Well, it's nothing that I have to consider and I thank you for teeing it up because that's why we have board policy. My job is to follow the policies and procedures that have been set forth by the board, who is our governing body. Um, there's three policies. We may have some elementary folks in here as well, and I want to shut some things down with that. Uh, Myers has come up, has been on social media. There were some incidents in Myers, uh, in May, uh, where on three different occasions, the one thing that wasn't mentioned, that these individuals were law enforcement who were coming on a property, uh, with, with weapons. They were not Sheltonham Police. We did address that. It was put out there that we did not address that. We did address that. The one thing that I did not do, that was asked of me to do, was to put the policies out to the community as a whole with regard to our stance around weapons. Uh, I'm going to be doing that in a letter. There's three policies that directly relate to our stance on weapons. So when you ask the question around considerations, it's all grounded in our board policy. Uh, minimally speaking, uh, with a weapon on school ground, it's, it's the automatic, uh, one-year expulsion. It could be more, um, based on that circumstance and the outcomes as we go through the investigation. But I don't do anything outside of the policy. That, that's what keeps me from being compromised and the district from being compromised. Does, does that answer the question? So.
But what then makes that more, the student, student policy or not be back? I'm trying to understand what, what considerations are there in the policy for this county?
All right. And if you tune in tomorrow during our policy committee, and I'm not being, I'm being very forthright. That's why I've updated our agenda for tomorrow to reflect the policies that relate specifically to the incident that happened on Friday. I believe there needs to be some adjustments in our policy, but I can't do that in isolation of, of the board. Um, so it's not going to be something I'm going to settle tonight. I will, I will push out what those policies are to the community at large so they at least have an idea of what's stated in our policy and what's our administrative regulation, the AR around each policy. We'll start to unpack, uh, policy two eighteen point two, um, tomorrow. And we'll follow up with two other related policies which specifically, uh, touch upon weapons. If a student brings it, if an employee, if an adult or outsider. So, um, definitely going to address that. My, my last question.
Actually, closing thoughts. Um, sorry. Um, we first of all is, and this, these are my opinions. Um, we need to have a student, student voice regarding this whole situation. I think that as parents, we want to come in, we're concerned, we want to mitigate the situation. We want to see, we want policies updated, we want the police involved. But the students have a voice. That's the one thing. The second thing is, and I'll just use my oldest for, for instance, he is 23. He was one when nine 11 happened. These children that are here, K through 12, are born into this society with not what we had as a reality. They have active shooter drills in kindergarten. I'm not saying get rid of it, but we have to understand their standpoint as a student and a lot of them are numb. And they might react a certain way where, again, we're parents, we want to fix, we're administrators, principals, we want to fix it. So I think that we need to be cognizant of that and while we're taking care of these things. Thank you.
We'll definitely facilitate that. Um, closing remarks are going to be by Napoleon Nelson. If anyone has any other comments, I will be here. Um, I'm gonna close here.
Um, so I, I also appreciate everyone coming out. Napoleon Nelson, uh, state rep covering Shelton, Jenkett Town, Springfield, uh, former board member. Uh, good luck to you all. Um, God bless you guys. Um, parent, um, spouse of a district employee. Uh, I will say a couple of things. Um, one, um, if there are, and as there are items that have come up from this conversation or that continue to arise that, uh, perhaps we need state policy around. Um, perhaps there's language that we ought to be considering around PIAA regulations on athletic events and things like that. Uh, understand that I'm hearing them. I will continue to work with the board and with leadership and folks in the IU and our other superintendents on that. Um, two, um, I'm thrilled, uh, that we've got these folks. I, we have a call, um, or we've had a couple, uh, and we'll have more, uh, where we bring together, uh, law enforcement and our school district supers and our township folks just to talk about what's happening in the community. And, and I think I, you know, Chief can tell you, I, I tell all of them on a regular basis that, uh, the work that we do when everything is fine is critical because it's not a matter of if something terrible were to happen, it's when, unfortunately. And the question always is, as long as we can have that when, and it's not now, as long as it's sometime in the future, our work matters because it's what we do when we still have that when that counts, right? So, um, they've been working, uh, phenomenally. Uh, we've been engaging with them. There are all sorts of grants on, uh, school safety grants and especially community policing grants that we work with our police departments on tremendously. And, and they're doing great stuff and we're looking forward to that. Um, there are talks about conversations that need to happen. I will say there are other conversations that still need to happen, even not just metal detectors, but there are some really interesting cameras that can perhaps detect concealed weapons on persons. Um, gunshot monitoring candor, cameras, obviously facial wrecking. There are some real interesting conversations that, that we're going to be on the outside of. They're going to happen here. We're going to have those conversations. But I say we're going to almost be on the outside of because they're really moving those sorts of dialogues in Philadelphia. Uh, and I will tell you, I'm on the education committee in Harrisburg. I'm also on the criminal justice portion of our appropriations committee on the subcommittee chair. Like, I know that these things are happening. So the last thing I will leave you with is there are policies that we're moving. I'm moving specifically around student mental health and our mental health policies, our procedures, our records. Um, there are other, uh, policies that we've been working on, moving through Harrisburg and even in Washington around gun violence prevention. Uh, the one that I mentioned, and I mentioned this to, to the folks who were talking last year, and I mentioned to you all again, the most important policy that we can discuss is U RPO, red flag laws, extreme risk protection orders. And effectively, what that says is if you see something, you seize a, a weapon, if you see a student or a young person who needs, just looking like they're, they're lost or, or even worse specifically, if they look like they're a danger to themselves or others, make it your duty. Make it your responsibility, right? So the most important thing that we all hopefully will, will do when we leave here is commit to being that portion of our community that looks after and looks at our kids, at and after. And when I say our kids, I don't mean my daughter who's in the 11th grade. And I don't mean your, your specific children. I mean our kids. I don't mean the kids that we know to have come through from kindergarten. I mean, I don't mean the kids that we think got off the bus, the secta bus, not the school bus. If they're walking into our school buildings until we understand that they don't belong here, they're our kids and look at them and after them. We still need crossing guards, right? Somebody, somebody should be a crossing guard. We've, three, be a crossing guard, right? Those are the sorts of things that, that if I can beg you, I'm begging you. Um, if I can implore you to think about, I know somebody, make sure that you're looking after people. Again, to the extent that there's legislation, uh, know that we're on it. We're, we're talking about these things. We're working on them, moving them. Um, we will continue to work with our school districts and our police departments on grants and funding and supports and just wrapping our arms around the district that I love, that you all love, uh, that we all need to, uh, be here and support. So thank you so much, uh, Dr. Scriven.
Raise your hand. Just wanted to, ooh, another board member, Dan Schultz, and there was another hand. These are my last two. We'll go there and then here.
Hi, I'm new to the district, or my children are. Um, and today I was talking to them about the Safe to Say program that was mentioned many times tonight. And, um, I just want to know, uh, for us parents, if we hear anything, what is, is it's eight four four Safe to Say if we did want to call? So that's what we would do. I don't know. I just looked it up online and that's what I saw. Eight four four Safe to Say. So I told my kids today that, um, you know, they don't have to say anything to me. They don't have to, they shouldn't maybe say anything to their peers. But that would be a great thing for them to do, would to call that number. This way it's completely anonymous. It will have no impact on them socially, their safety. In fact, they could save somebody else, whether it's this type of violence, sexual violence, vandalism, whatever. Like, they don't have to tell me, they don't have to tell you directly. But if they call eight four four Safe to Say, it's completely anonymous and it couldn't make a difference. And even if you, as a parent, heard that there are children in this school doing that, you should call, you know?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't introduce myself earlier. My name is Tara Knox. My son is a incoming, well, he's a sophomore. He just started today. Um, he put, he's on the football team. He's also on the track team. Um, so after all this conversation, which I appreciate, I feel comfortable going to the game and how we're going to handle the policies for the team, the band, color guard, for cheerleaders. I'm comfortable with that. What I'm not comfortable with, what I struggled with this entire weekend is the safety of my child coming into the school. And I know you addressed this when we started saying, we're not settled on metal detectors. I'm aware of that, but I have to say as a parent, I was not comfortable sending my son to this school on the first day of school. That is a very unsettling feeling to have. Um, I know this gentleman mentioned the parents' mental health. That is something that's very unsettling to think about. Is my son going to be safe walking into this school? Because the child could come in here without the intention of hurting someone. We've seen it across the United States, a gun found in a book bag or found anywhere. They could, it, it could drop out of their pockets without the intention to harm someone, but something could happen if it is not found. So we don't have bag scans. We don't have wands. They're not padded. We don't have any of that. So that safety concern is in the back of my head until something happens, till that is in place. Is my child safe in this school? I don't care about the football game. I don't care about the track game. Is he safe in this school? And right now, I don't, I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable with that. I have to be honest with that.
Do what they're doing and come back. So they could come in without a gun and then left.
Right. This is the first of many conversations. I have learned that I cannot 100% guarantee that nothing will happen. Just like I had no control over Friday. I think collectively, we have to continue to work on our path forward. That's why I had this town hall and that's why I've tried to be as transparent as what I can be. We need to all do our part. Um, I'm gonna be honest, we, we have an awesome district. And, um, we, we've got great leaders and we have committed families. We really do. Um, this is a testament to that right now. I respect your uneasiness as, as a parent. I'm a parent of two. Mine are grown. Um, I just have to work through that with you and show you through incremental actions um, that we will get to where we need to be. Um, I know you will hold me accountable as you always do, so, uh, I'm going to leave it at that. I thank you all for this evening. I'm not running out the door. Uh, so if any of you have any further, um, insights, is probably the best word. Uh, I'll be here to address them. Be safe and we will continue this journey.